If everyone's ready, we will call the meeting to order. Just to let everyone know, I am the acting chair for this month. I'm filling in for Carol tonight, who is dealing with family issues. So she's not able to be here for a little bit. She's staying in touch, but she's just taking a little break to take care of some family matters. And with that, I will look for approval of the agenda.
Move approval, Madam Chair?
All right, first item, all in favor? Thank you, that's carried. The next item on the agenda is public participation. Anyone wishing to speak to council may approach. And I see that I may have a conflict on this item, so I'm going to pass the chair to Councilor Martin, who is next up on the acting mayor's schedule. I will step out and you can call me back when you're ready for me.
Tonight, I'm going to read a summary of a much longer letter that I've written, and I'll email it to all the councillors, because I don't want to kill that many trees. So to start with, I'm Tim Day, 3546 Charlie Place. Councillor Cynthia is my wife. We've lived in our house since 1987, and it was completely private when we moved in. Large blackberries blocked the view of our house and yard from the road. In 1995, the city removed all of the blackberries. This revealed the road edge had not been finished and became a safety concern for children falling down a steep slope. In 1995, as a good citizen, I undertook to build a homeowner-maintained infrastructure to make the edge safe for children. It took hundreds of hours of work and thousands of dollars of material to build this infrastructure. I built a rock wall to address the steep slope and did plantings to stabilize the slope and rock wall. Along with other plantings, I planted a giant sequoia and four golden lelande. City staff was difficult to work with. The mayor visited the site after my city infrastructure project was completed and my work was approved. In 2003, I built a rock wall to create a ledge to do maintenance on the back of the Laurel hedge. After I'd completed the work, we applied for a highway use permit. I included the 1995 city infrastructure work with this permit. The city engineer inspected and approved my permit. In February 2017, Tomahawk Tree Service cleaned up the mess in the backyard of 3550 Charlie, our neighbor, created when the cedar hedge planted on the boulevard by the original owner of 3550, failed due to neglect and abuse by the present owner of 3550. That was the first visit they cleaned up the mess. On Friday, March 24th, Tomahawk Tree Service arrived on the cul-de-sac with large equipment and a large crew and started to cut down the neighbor's hedge. We contacted City Hall and two hours later, Rob and Gord arrived. Rob was aggressive and unprofessional, and we had an unpleasant exchange. While I was standing on the cul-de-sac, tomahawks started to limb my sequoia. I stopped them by standing under the sequoia where the branches were landing. The contractor that appeared to be in charge said not to worry. They would stay away from the sequoia, it was healthy and would survive the limbing. Later that afternoon, according to the contractor, a city staff member phoned and ordered them, ordered the contractor to kill the sequoia and four golden lelande, all 22-plus years old. I've notified the CAO, manager of engineering and mayor about our being wronged. The city has been uncooperative. We received a registered letter from the city's attorney dated May 24th, 2017. The letter is harassment and threatens me. The letter, CCD and Howitt and Nikki Hoglund, contains a confusing account of my 1995 city infrastructure project, my 2003 highway use permit, and the killing of my sequoia tree. From Young Anderson Registered Letter. This is May 24th. Yep, well after the event. The city has since inspected the retaining wall and has determined that it has not been maintained to a level that would prevent a safety concern to the public and that it's currently in disrepair. In light of the foregoing, the city is of the view that, as a result of your failure to maintain the retaining wall and trees to prevent a safety concern to the public, the permit no longer authorizes your use of the boulevard. In the circumstances, the city does not intend to replace the trees, but will landscape the boulevard in accordance with normal city practice. With respect to the retaining wall, the city is prepared to consider granting you an appropriate encroachment agreement authorized in the continued use of the boulevard for the retaining wall. However, it will be a condition of the city doing so that the retaining wall be brought into a safe condition. If you wish the city to consider granting you an encroachment agreement, please contact the city's Director of Engineering and Public Works. Otherwise, the city looks forward to a timely removal of the retained wall from the boulevard. Instead of working with me to remediate the damages done by the city to my 1995 city infrastructure project, I've received a harassing and threatening letter from the city lawyer. I'm asking council to rescind the letter from your lawyer.
Any questions?
Thank you, Tim. We can't do questions, it's just...
Okay.
Thank you.
And I have the longer version, then I'll leave it.
Okay.
Judy Chura, 31, 36, Anthrobus Crescent.
Thank you, go ahead.
I believe that you've received an email. I'll have received an email on my issue. I hope everybody has had a chance to look at it. I'm going to just bring a few points that I think are important. The reason I came to council is to have changes made so that nobody else has to have this happen to them. I feel that the bylaw used and the right-of-way permit does not pertain to what we're doing. I feel it should be considered maintenance or landscaping. I think there's an opportunity here to change things and to encourage more boulevard beautification. I know of two other residents on our street that were planning on beautifying their boulevard and are not doing so now. One comment was, "This is ridiculous." We feel singled out and that we have been treated heavily handed. And we feel that the whole situation has been handled with a heavy hand. Put yourself in my shoes. Drive through the streets of Callwood with large rocks, lots of debris, RVs parked, vehicles parked on boulevards, how would you feel? We were told by one of the staff that they had no choice. If that's the case, maybe council should look at what they could do to give staff more flexibility and also to use some common sense in matters such as this. I also hope that this matter doesn't get shuffled under and moved around so that buried between cracks so that it never gets handled. We've experienced this happening in another situation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Councilman Callwood. My name is Philip Nurse. I'm the general manager of Royal Callwood Golf Club. I believe you have a letter before you this evening under item 5.1, regarding the noise bylaw 1594. As it stated in my letter, I was hoping for a consideration to be made for the bylaw as a 7A time that we could get excluded to a 6. And the issue that we're having here is with the northwest corner of the property. And kind of give you, in proximity with that is the neighboring properties on Fairway Avenue, Meaford Avenue, and we'll say along Veterans. So it's that corner off the Rona side. We continue to have, we'll say, challenges with the neighbors on there as we continue to try to maintain the property. How it works for us, we have a 6:30 time in the morning start time. Our crew gets out of the head of time so we can save the safety of the players. And then they move around throughout the property in a circular motion to stay ahead of the day going forward. It's kind of difficult for us to delay the time regarding the bylaws as they add up just for on the productivity side and the staff, and there's a safety concern as well. So as I mentioned in my letter to use, this is not uncommon in municipalities and other parts of the country with noise bylaws and golf courses. And I appreciate your consideration tonight when you're discussing this. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address council? This is your time. Calling for a second time. All right, I'm not seeing anyone else with a burning desire to come to the dreaded podium. The next item on our agenda then is the mayor's message. And I don't have too much to share with you, but I did want to share just one thing. It's actually in some of the minutes that we're going to receive tonight. And that is that Public Works does maintain a 24-hour call-in line. And the number is 250-812-992. And the public is encouraged to call in road conditions. And that also includes conditions for cyclists. So this is in the Cycling Advisory Committee meeting minutes, where the manager of Public Works attended and did provide that information to us so that we can improve those areas where, you know, the street sweeper needs to come more often or there's an issue. I just wanted to draw that to your attention, because I think that's pretty good service that Public Works offers to allow citizens to phone in any time. Anything from council for this evening's announcements? Councillor Nalt?
Thank you. I had the opportunity on Sunday to go down to the Esquire Mount Lagoon and participate in the Esquire Mount Lagoon Stewardship Initiative's annual broom bash. We had a fabulous time tearing out broom and blackberries. Also, was joined by the Greater Victoria Green team. I think we had about 18 volunteers in total. We pulled out an awful lot of broom and blackberry. City Works has pretty much cleared it all up now. All of the piles are basically gone. While we were there, we also met a group from Surf Rider Vancouver Island, who were doing a trash pickup on the lagoon. Another volunteer group, they were doing a fabulous job picking up any litter that was there. There was actually surprisingly little. And finally, I observed a single local resident who was also doing litter pickup, something he says he does a couple of times a week. I just want to emphasize the work we're getting out of volunteers in this city. I think it's really wonderful that people will give their time to do this kind of work. The lagoon is looking a lot better for it, and I think we should send our compliments to all of these groups.
Thank you. Seeing no other information coming forward, we will move on to adoption of the minutes. We have... All right, we have three sets of minutes to adopt. The regular meeting of council from May 23rd, the special committee of the whole from May 29th, and the public hearing for bylaw number 1678 regarding secondary suites and accessory dwelling units.
Move adoption.
Moved and seconded, all in favor? That's carried, thank you. And we have several minutes to receive the report of the public hearing for bylaw number 1678, the official community plan steering committee meeting from February 16th, the interunicycle advisory committee on disability issues from April 20th, the cycling advisory committee from May 1st, and the transportation and public infrastructure committee from October 3rd.
Move receipt, Madam Chair?
Moved and seconded, all in favor? That is carried, thank you very much. The next item is a correspondence from the general manager of the Royal Callwood Golf Club regarding a request for waiver of the noise bylaw to allow use of maintenance equipment prior to 7:00 AM. How shall we proceed?
Thank you, Madam Chair. As Mr. Nurse was discussing with council during public participation, it is a question of whether or not council is open to approving to allow them to do maintenance on their greens prior to 7 o'clock in the morning. The noise bylaw doesn't allow that until 7 o'clock in the morning, until 9 o'clock at night. As he explained, it doesn't suit their staff safety and practices in order to keep their maintenance ahead of when the fields are open to the public. So council has a couple of options, which is they can deny the request. They can approve the request and stipulate any types of conditions, whether they want it to say it's only at certain times of the year. Or they can ask staff to look into the issue, determine what the cause and effect is on the neighborhood or what the neighbors that may be affected might have to say, and whether the best approach is, instead of a council resolution, an amendment to the noise bylaw that would have a provision saying, despite what it says in section 5.1E, it doesn't apply to the Royal Callwood Golf Club during April through September, or, you know, some kind of a stipulation that allows them to do this if it's supported by council. So it's up to council to decide what approach they may like to take, which could include referring it to staff.
Okay, discussion? Councillor Nalt?
Yes, I would be in favor of referring this matter back to staff to find out how it's going to impact the adjacent residents. I don't know if they were notified of this letter the way they would be for an amendment to zoning or something like that. My concern is that if we do give an exemption, we will next get a whole bunch of complaints from residents about gas-powered machinery operating at 6:30 in the morning. I don't really buy the issue that this is a safety issue. If it was a safety issue, they could bump their tee times back by half an hour and not have that issue. So I would really prefer this be referred to staff for consultation with the affected residents. But I won't make that motion yet in case anybody else has further discussion.
Okay, further discussion? Councillor Trace?
I'm interested in knowing how long this practice has been carried on. Have you been doing this typically for years, starting at this earlier time? And you're just now getting complaints?
I've been there 13 years, and over the last three or four, I'd say the complaints, either the homeowners have changed. We haven't changed our practices. We were always starting 4:07. We haven't changed the type of equipment. And I will say that perhaps it's just the sensitivity to some. Like I said, along Meaford, there hasn't been very many. We've had a couple. Most of the complaints are coming on the Fairway side, which is the Langford residents because of where the borderline is. We haven't really changed the practice. We have this year, as a conscious effort, backed up the times in trying to cut in-between the tee-off times. I appreciate Councilman Nalt's comment to back up the tee. It just causes us a force the rest of the day, not able to service our guests and our members. Just to answer that question. We haven't really changed the practice. It's just becoming either encroachment on the property is becoming tighter and tighter. More homes are being built. People's windows are being opened. It's usually the spring of the year and the fall, and it's specific type of equipment depending on what's happening with the weather. It's the blowers. The moors aren't so bad. It's not the Fairway moors, it's the greens. And there is three greens. It's number two, three, and four. The lake sometimes has some issues as well going across for the sound. And it's a large turbine blower, which we don't use. We will keep that off the property, the 4:07, because it's like an airplane craft. It's quite large. And we use that to deal with the geese issue, which is happening as well because of the droppings. And if we don't blow it off, we end up smearing it into it. It's hard on the machinery. So there's a domino effect, and I don't mean to continue on with your, not perhaps answer your question specifically. But we've been addressing it a little bit. But in the last year, the complaints this spring were quite heavily. I know I had two phone calls from the bylaw officers as well. One being from Langford and two from Callwood, so hence the letter that was sent.
I think we're at discussion unless we ask you up. Thank you very much. Further discussion? I'm not seeing any further discussion. I heard a tell of a motion.
In that case, I would move we refer this matter to staff to review and identify potential impact on neighboring Callwood properties and determine if a noise bylaw amendment is required, if this request is supported, and report their findings to council.
I'll second the motion.
I'll... Oh, discussion on the motion?
So I'm going to vote in favor of the motion. Just a couple of questions for staff, though, or suggestions, perhaps. Since Callwood, or Royal Callwood, we're looking at this, the next question's going to be Olympic View.
Sorry, but I have to assert my chair's hot. You should have done that at discussion.
This is discussion.
No, the only discussion on a motion to refer is as to the appropriateness of the motion.
All right.
I'm sorry. All right, all in favor of the referral motion? Thank you. I'm sorry, there is no discussion.
Yeah, nice try. If I can't do it, you certainly can.
I know, I know. All right, our next item is 6.1, Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee regarding Milburn Road and the surrounding neighborhoods' traffic and speeding concerns. Councillor Nalt, is that you?
Committee reviewed a report from staff on speeding concerns on Milburn Road and surrounding neighborhoods. Rousing discussion followed. The consensus was that speeding was a problem across all of Callwood, not just Milburn, Aloha, et cetera. And having rented in the neighborhood, I also pointed out that I really agree with the Milburn residents' complaint. People travel at an incredible speed, both down that hill and up it. People cut down Hatley and go roaring down Milburn at great rates of speed in spite of the posted 40-kilometer speed limit. My feeling on this and the other speeding issues is this is not a road issue. This is an enforcement issue. It's a driver issue. We have to educate the drivers to slow down. We have to start handing out tickets to those that speed. Unfortunately, the province got rid of the photo radar program, which would have been ideal to use in this kind of situation. It was agreed that a more comprehensive plan was needed to deal with the city's roads. As was pointed out by the engineer, we've really gone about this in a piecemeal fashion. One zone here, one speed hump there, without real regard to what the road classification is or how putting them in specific roads will change the traffic on other roads. So we've had a four-part recommendation. First, that it be recommended to council, that council direct staff to prepare a traffic calming and enforcement policy within the next six months that will deal with, that would deal with how we plan to use arterial roads and limit speeding and so forth on other roads. That the city consider placing speed cushions on Milburn Road. That the city speak with the RCMP about enhanced enforcement on Hatley Drive, Lagoon Road, Milburn Road, and Ocean Boulevard, because they have been turned into alternative commuter routes. And finally, that council asks staff to look into the timing of lights on Suk Road and Old Island Highway to accommodate a freer flow of traffic at the speed limit during rush hour times. Now, I know traffic lights have been coordinated in other cities to move traffic in or out at reasonable speeds with great success. What committee did not know is whether our traffic system would allow that or not. So that would be the request for staff. So I would move all four recommendations.
You could make that suggestion now?
May I make a suggestion that we sever the second statement, that the city also consider placing speed cushions on Milburn Road into a separate thing? I know I can support the rest of it, but I would not be supporting it, the second.
I would be happy to vote on that separately. I'll make that as a separate motion.
Okay, so the first motion would be the first bullet, not the speed cushions, the third bullet and the fourth bullet that we see before us then. And that's seconded by Councillor Martin. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? That's carried. Thank you.
Then I would further move that the city consider placing speed cushions on Milburn Road. And the cushions we are proposing are temporary measures. They are removable. I specifically picked Milburn Road because there are excessive speeds on there. There are no sidewalks, no way for pedestrians to get out of the way on Milburn. So I think we have to do something in the short term. If the report comes back and says we should change that, then the speed humps will be removable.
Looking for a seconded? Seconded? Nope, discussion?
I would just like to bring to council's attention, once again, as I've mentioned in the past, how dangerous Lagoon Road is. We seem to be focusing mostly on Milburn, but Lagoon Road is equally as dangerous. There's no sidewalks. When you've got a bike rider coming up Lagoon Road, there's no room for two cars to pass. And they speed down Lagoon just like they do Milburn. And in particular, trying to make a left-hand turn onto Heatherbell. I've almost been rear-ended a few times. In fact, one time when I was making a left-hand turn there, glanced in the rearview mirror, and I actually had to put my foot on the gas and go forward to avoid being hit from the car behind coming down the hill because of the visions are blocked with the corner there. And he was going to rear-end me. And also trying to make a left-hand turn on Heatherbell. Your views are blocked with the hedges on the properties on the right-hand side of the road going down the hill. I find that equally as dangerous and really believe that with all the houses going in in that area, there should be a left-hand turning lane. I know that's not the topic of discussion, but I just want to throw that out there.
Thank you. Further discussion, Councillor Logan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I guess I just wonder about the wording, "consider." You know, it's either we give staff direction to do it or not. And then, you know, I also wonder what the ramifications on the rest of the neighborhood will be. And it's not that I disagree with the speed cushions, because I know they tend to be quite successful in probably about 70% of the traffic going through, based on my observations in Callow Creek. But I also know that although they're temporary, because they're bolted in, if we took them out at a later date, we'd probably have a neighborhood uprising as well. Even if we stayed up front, that these suckers are just temporary. So, you know, I just worry, as Councillor Trace had alluded to, what are the spill-off, the unintended consequences of putting these speed cushions on Milburn? On the unintended consequences on Lagoon Road? And, you know, I really want to make sure that we're not acting in a knee-jerk type of fashion before kind of looking at the whole neighborhood. You know, we're addressing Milburn, but boy, the Lagoon Road residents are going to be up here just lighting their hair on fire, you know, because we've, all the traffics moved over. And we haven't really given it a good study. So, yeah, I'm not sure that I can endorse the speed cushions right now without having a little more conversation, some staff work to understand what the ramifications on Lagoon, Aloha, all the other surrounding streets.
Thank you. I share Councillor Trace's concerns. Speeding on Ocean Boulevard, Lagoon, et cetera, is an issue with all of us. The reason we are specifically considering Milburn at this point is it has a different road designation in the transportation master plan from the other roads. It is a local road, therefore it should have limited speeds. The engineer pointed out, and I guess council is familiar with some of the complaints we have about restricting speeds on our arterial roads, diverting traffic to other roads. Well, Lagoon, Ocean Boulevard, et cetera, are those other roads. So the master plan for this speeding should address these issues. It may involve making some of the changes that Councillor Logan pointed out of removing speed limit, the speed reductions. It may not. But specifically, Milburn Road, because it's a local road, and... But specifically, Milburn Road, because it's a local road, and I believe it deserves the protection, the report did call for up to three speed humps, and I assume that's what staff would be working on. I could make that specifically part of the motion, if that would make council feel more comfortable.
Counselor Chong.
Great, thank you, Your Worship. Just my thoughts on considering placing speed cushions. I'm definitely in favor of considering. I don't interpret that as, you know, a definite command to put speed cushions on Milburn. I would be interested on how many we would be looking at, how much it would cost. But also, I think if we put speed cushions on Milburn, which I'm not arguing that they're needed, I think it would put more burden on Lagoon Road, at the same time, just doing the one road. I would feel more comfortable seeing the traffic calming enforcement policy first, before making a definitive decision on Milburn. So I am opening, or I am open to considering, but I'm not saying definitely put them on without further investigation. Thank you.
Counselor Martin?
Thank you. So I oppose this at TPI, and obviously, I'm opposing it now. I think a lot of it's already been said. My concern has been the unintentional consequences of pushing it onto Lagoon. The other thing, the other main issue was, this was a recommendation that came from our committee, rather than, it did not come from staff. And staff at no point suggested speed cushions on Milburn. That was a recommendation of the committee. So I'm much more in favor of having staff prepare a traffic calming enforcement policy, and then looking through that, and then making some educated decisions on when and what would be most appropriate. So I will be opposing this.
Thank you. I think everyone has weighed in, so I will, I'm not used to having to chair, you don't get to jump in as much, so. I am, obviously, I was at the meeting, and I am in favor of speed cushions. I do, however, think that maybe it makes sense to be a little more patient than I feel, and look at both Lagoon and Milburn together. With the policy, maybe speed cushions will be recommended for both roads. I have seen around Callwood Creek Park that speed cushions are very effective, and they can be effective without causing problems for buses and fire trucks. And certainly, those are the two roads, and they are de facto carrying a great deal of our traffic, seeking to find an alternate route. So, I guess I'm, I can see that council is not prepared at this time to put the speed cushions on Milburn Road to get started. I think that's unfortunate for the residents who tried very hard to bring this issue forward and get some resolution. However, I hope they'll be patient with us, and that we will come up with an even better solution by waiting a little bit longer, and hopefully, nothing too terrible happens between now and then. I hope that it will be a high priority for the city to respond to the concerns that residents have raised. I know there's no fast answers, because we can't magically have sidewalks and bicycle lanes there tomorrow, but I would hope that we can do something to address the situation sooner rather than later. Our next item, then? Oh. There was no seconded for the motion for the speed cushions. No, she just discussed. So, the motion failed for lack of a seconded, and we will wait and see what staff can give us. So our next item is regarding 2017 project updates, recommendation from Transportation and Public Infrastructure.
Thank you. This item came forward, we were presented a brief report on progress of projects in progress. It was pointed out that this committee had not met since October of last year. So this is the first update we've had since probably two or three meetings before that, so pushing a year since we've had an update on progress of projects. It was felt that this was a very important topic, and that this should continue to be an important topic, whether we continue with Transportation and Public Infrastructure as a committee, or whether we go to committee of the whole. So, I would recommend move that council, to counsel that regular monthly updates and progress reports on projects budgeted for 2017 be submitted at meetings of the Transportation and Public Infrastructure Committee, or committee of the whole, should council go that route.
Discussion? Counselor Logan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wholeheartedly agree with that. I think sometimes we find out that a project hasn't occurred when we head into the next year's budget cycle, and find out that the money's been carried forward. So I appreciate the update. I guess through you, Madam Chair, to Counselor Nalt, there's a few items here that says where they have a status "not started," like land improvements to fences and stairs, and the crosswalk at the VMP and Havenwood Park, those types of things. Was there any discussions, and some advice from engineering in terms of when those projects might be tendered?
Staff informed us that they were confident that all of the projects could be carried out in this fiscal year. My personal opinion is that's highly unlikely, given, for example, that Langford just tried to do a multimillion-dollar project and didn't get a single bid, or got one bid for it, that was, I think, 20% over-budget. So we're working in difficult times to get contractors to come forward. One of our contracts was held up while we got a grant application in, because we had to have the grant application in before work started in order to qualify. I believe that is on the road right now. As for the other projects, I'm not sure exactly where we stand, but staff seem confident that we could get most of it, or all of it, done this fiscal year. Personally, I'm taking a wait-and-see attitude, hence the need for those reports.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Seeing none, I will call a question. All in favor? That is carried. Next is a report from the Director of Engineering regarding the award of the contract for the Allendale Pit Pumping System. This has not been to committee, and I don't see anyone here to present, so I don't, maybe the CAO is presenting?
Thank you, Your Worship. This is the final phase of the central sewer contract that's just completing on Machosen Road and Suk Road, and the final phase is to put in a pump station on the road right-of-way that runs through Allendale Pit. The proposal has come in under budget, and staff are recommending that we proceed with a tender award to, let me get the name correct, Global Water Partners Limited, for the amount of $674,392.
Thank you. Discussion?
I'll move the recommendation, Madam Chair.
Moved and seconded. I have just a question, I'm not sure if the CAO would be able to answer. You mentioned that the project is being built in the road right-of-way? It will not preclude the roadway, though?
No. The road will continue to be accessible, yes.
Thank you. And I guess I will have to say that I have concerns with this project, and I will not be voting in favor.
Thank you. This is just more of a confusion question than anything else. For some reason, I was coming up with a number of, I don't know where I saw it, was like 674,000 or something, but it's, the contract's for just over a million, correct? That is, what are we approving? Which amount are we approving?
The, this contract award is for 674,392.
So, and the only reason I ask that is because on page 72 of my paper, when did it get changed? Well, I'm just, like, the recommendation says a million.
That's the report for the previous phase.
Oh, okay, thank you. So that's where I messed up. Thank you, apologize.
It's alright. It is confusing, because it's, that was the amount for the previous phase, so under the financial consideration in the report. Alright, any further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All in favor? And opposed? It is carried. Moving on to Finance and Administration Committee, I have a memorandum from the Corporate Communications Manager regarding the draft 2016 annual report.
Thank you. So the draft annual report is presented for your review. It's been prepared in accordance with the community charter. And while this is a legislative requirement, our annual report tends to be one of our nicer promotional documents. It's filled with rich images, and it's something that invites the public in to learn more about Callwood and connect with Callwood. So, it's a really collaborative effort between all the directors and staff, and it's an opportunity to review what successful projects we've done last year, and to really clarify what we're aiming for the next year. So it serves a lot of purposes. It has been available to the public, as it needs to be, for over two weeks now. Two public notices were placed in the Goldstream Gazette. At the time this was written, we had received one email of input from the public, some very useful and helpful input. They picked a few, picked up on a few typos, and requested a few clarifications that were very helpful. So I have that email here. Those changes were made, the majority of the changes that could be included, so those are all included in the document that you reviewed. So I present it for your comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion from the council members?
Sorry, Pat.
Madam Director of Administration?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a reminder that the public is to be offered an opportunity to make comment on the annual report.
Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on the annual report? Apparently, that's how it works. Alright, seeing none, I will bring it back to council. I just have one quick question. I was wondering where you got your population growth numbers from?
Those are still the CRD numbers. It's the best population projections we have. The issue with those projections has been raised in the past, but we don't have anything better to go on at this point, so I have used those again.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll move the recommendation, Madam Chair.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? That is carried. Thank you for another beautiful annual report.
It's okay. Let's not get, let's not get up to her head, right?
Oh, she needs a little pumperup, come on. Next item on our agenda is a report from the Director of Administration with regard to the Westshore Parks and Recreation Proposed Fees and Charges effective September 1st, 2017, to August 31st, 2018, and the draft bylaw number 1685.
Madam Chair, Counselor Chong and I will excuse ourselves due to a potential conflict of interest.
Alright. And we still have quorum, just?
Just.
Madam Director of Administration, take it away.
Madam Chair, just so everybody knows, we are working on getting the legal opinion, so that we can put the regulation into effect that was passed by the province, and our council members serving on the board won't have to keep declaring a potential conflict. So, that's in the works. So tonight, what we have presented before you is discussion on the Westshore Parks and Recreation Center's annual fees and charges review. Every year, they do a comparison of other surrounding municipalities and school districts, the usage levels, new facilities that have come into the area, and desired recovery rates for the activities that they provide. So they have approved their new fees and charges schedule at the society board level on April the 20th. The new rates, if approved by council, are effective September 1st of each year and continue to August the 31st of the following year. The Westshore Parks and Recreation Society's member agreement stipulates that the joint owners must review and approve the proposed fees and charges on an annual basis, and each council has to approve those fees and charges through adoption of a bylaw. So bylaw number 1685 is scheduled for consideration of first three readings later in the evening. Should council determine that they want more information from the society, they can defer this bylaw to another meeting. Otherwise, to authorize the new fees and charges proposed by the Westshore Parks and Recreation Board of Directors, council's requested to give further consideration to Westshore Parks and Recreation Center Fees and Charges bylaw number 1685, when the bylaw is presented for discussion under the bylaw section of tonight's agenda later in the evening.
So I'm just reading this, and suddenly going, do we need a motion, or do we just move through it at the bylaw time?
That's correct. We don't, we don't have to receive the report, it's just...
Alright. Counselor Nalt?
Yes, having reviewed the report, I might be not thorough in it, but I can't find any mention of the senior center there, whether there's an increase in fees for that. It's a shame that the directors have to leave, because they're probably the ones that could answer that question.
I did see in their charts for rental of spaces, that there are a few times where, like, the auditorium is listed.
Yes, I'm not thinking of the rentals, I'm thinking of the fee that the seniors pay for a yearly membership, and I can't find any mention of that.
Yeah. From my time when I was on the board of the Westshore Parks and Rec Society quite a while ago, I believe that they operate as a nonprofit society, separate from Westshore Parks and Rec. But I could be incorrect. But they operate quite separately from Westshore Parks. They're part of, but not part of.
So I guess my question would be to the Director of Administration, do they submit a separate budget to us, or Wanda Fuka, or...
The seniors?
Yes.
I believe the seniors do all their reporting through Westshore Parks and Recreation, and then all of the financial information is part of Westshore Parks and Recreation's budget submitted to the city, but our Director of Finance may be able to help with that, I'm not sure. All of their organizational structure is within Westshore Parks and Recreation's governance for the seniors.
Yeah, I have never seen anything from the seniors. They are, as far as I know, a standalone society, like, certainly independent from Callwood.
I was just looking to see if I could find it in their spreadsheet. But I cannot. But I did see for a wedding venue, that their gymnasium is available for, you know, events. So, seeing no further ability to answer a question, is there any other questions? Alright, and since no motion is required, are we complete that item? Then we will move on to the bylaw section of the agenda? We've got everybody reading the fine print now with their squinty eyes. We've got everybody reading the fine print now with their squinty eyes. Yeah, I'll just, we're not in a big rush. I'll give us a moment. We are just about to start the bylaws. A question was asked that we didn't know the answer to. So we're reading with squinty eyes all of the spreadsheets. From West Shore Parks and Rec.
I would love to help answer the questions. But I choose not to.
That's your best line tonight. I think Torghumson and Schlenker refuse to allow you to answer.
If I may, Madam Chair, one of the things we're just noticing in the detail is for the senior center, they do have fees and charges in there for using facilities. We just don't see whatever the costs may be for the seniors' facility. I think that's an internal process.
Yeah, and there's rooms that aren't in there, too, like their dance floor. That's a good question for next time. That's wonderful, isn't it? All right. So we're going to move on to bylaws now. Bylaw number 1690, final reading, the five-year financial plan 2017 to 2021. Bylaw number 1673, 2017. Amendment number one, Schedule A and Schedule B. Bylaw number 1690, 2017. And the other numbers listed there. They make no sense to me. Move final reading?
Second.
All those in favor? That's carried. The next item is bylaw number 1678, final reading. And there is a note on my agenda. Madam Director of Administration, have we confirmed with the Ministry of Transportation that approval has been granted?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We did receive approval from the ministry today.
Excellent. So, okay. I won't read all the numbers. This is for the final reading of Callwood Land Use Bylaw 151, 1989, regarding secondary suites and accessory dwelling units. All those in favor? Any opposed? There's none opposed. That is final reading. We're done with that one. Bylaw number 1691, for first and second readings only, the Callwood Official Community Plan, bylaw number 999, 2008. Amendment number 11, 3340 Anchorage Avenue, bylaw number 1692, 2017.
Second.
All those in favor? It is carried.
Move second.
Oh, I'm sorry, opposed. One opposed.
Second, second.
All right. Discussion on second reading. Counselor Nolte?
Yes, thank you. The reason I will be opposing both 1691 and 1692 is it will, they will result in creating lots that are considerably smaller than all of the neighboring lots. I think it's a negative to the neighborhood. And also, they will result in creating an official community plan of neighborhood for one lot in the entire area, which I think is farcical. So everybody else is hillside and shoreline. This one lot will be neighborhood, and that is not good zoning.
Thank you. Any further discussion on second reading? Seeing none, I will call a question. All those in favor? Any opposed? One opposed. Thank you. Next item under the bylaws is bylaw number 1683, for final reading, the Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment. Oh, yes. Okay. Sorry, I did miss one. Bylaw number 1692, first and second readings, for the Callwood Land Use Bylaw Number 151, 1989. Amendment number 162, for 3340 Anchorage Avenue, bylaw number 1692, 2017. And looking for first and second.
Move introduction, Madam Chair.
All those in favor? Opposed? One opposed?
Move second.
Any discussion on second reading? Seeing none. All those in favor? And those opposed? Just one opposed. And now, for bylaw number 1683, final reading, for the Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 598, 2001. Amendment number 56, LAS Enlargement 3134, Machosen Road, bylaw number 1683, 2017. And we are looking for final reading.
Move final, Madam Chair.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? That is carried. And the next item is bylaw number 1684, final reading, Callwood Central Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 480, 1999. Amendment number eight, LAS Enlargement 3134, Machosen Road, bylaw number 1684, 2017. Looking for, thank you. Second here, please?
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? None. Bylaw number 1686, final reading, Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 598, 2001. Amendment number 57, LAS Enlargement for 3116 Wishart Road, bylaw number 1686, 2017. Looking for final?
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It is carried. And bylaw number 1688, for second and third readings, Callwood Main Sewer Local Area Service Bylaw Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 598, 2001. Amendment number 58, Local Area Service Enlargement for 3439 Fulton Road, bylaw number 1688, 2017.
Move introduction?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? It is carried.
Move second?
Second reading. Any discussion at second reading? Seeing no discussion. All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed. Looking for third reading?
Move third?
Second.
It's moved and seconded. All in favor? It is carried. Bylaw number 1689, first, second, and third readings, for Callwood West Sewer Local Area Service Establishment and Loan Authorization, bylaw number 625, 2001. Amendment number 43, Local Area Service Enlargement for 3439 Fulton Road, bylaw 1689, 2017. Introduction is moved? Seconded. All those in favor? It's carried. Opposed? None opposed. And looking for second reading?
Move second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? I should have called for discussion. I don't think there was any. Looking for third reading?
Move third?
Moved and seconded. All those in favor? Any opposed? None opposed. Yes. Yes.
On bylaws, does, does Counselor Chong and I need to leave on the West Shore?
Yes, you do.
So we will excuse ourselves.
Okay. So our next item, after Torghumson leaves the room, is bylaw number 1685, first, second, and third readings, for West Shore Parks and Recreation Center Fees and Charges, bylaw number 1685, 2017.
Move first reading?
Moved and seconded. In favor? Any opposed? There's none opposed.
Move second.
Seconded and seconded. Although, any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? It is carried.
Move third?
Last one, we got it right. All those in favor? Any opposed? It's carried.
Move adjournment?
Thank you. There is no in-camera that was finished earlier, and there is no release of in-camera resolutions.